Motion to adjourn the executive session.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it. A closed session. Sorry about that. Thank you, Madam Chair. Certification of closed session pursuant to subsection 2.2-3712D of Code Virginia in 1950 as amended, each member of the Board of Supervisors upon real call certifies that to the best of their knowledge only business public matters were lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board of Supervisors. Any member of the Board of Supervisors who believes that there was a departure from the requirements shall say so, state so prior to the vote indicating substance of the departure that in his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe a departure has taken place? Seeing none. If you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Luann Wallace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
David Eaton?
Yes.
Steve Breeding?
Yes.
Oris Christian?
Yes.
Rebecca Dye?
Yes.
Ma'am, we have approval to return to regular session.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have our invocation and remain standing for the pledge, please.
Father God, Lord, we love you, we thank you, and praise you today, Father. Father, we thank you for this holiday season, Father, and we thank you for allowing us to meet together. We ask you to bless this meeting, help us use what you've given us so that we may go out and spread your name, Father. Father, you tell us during the trials to give you praise, so tonight we want to give you praise, Father. For it's in your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and limited in just as broad.
At this time, I'd like to make some amendments to our agenda. We need to add a planning commission appointment under number four, board appointments. We have a resignation and an appointment back in that position. Also, under our county attorney, number four, we have information from the Southwest Virginia Regional Jail Authority Agreement, and Ms. Katie will be discussing that. And under the county administrator request, number eight, we need to add that. It's a VDOT resolution for Route 743. So with those items, I'll take a motion to amend their agenda.
Madam Chair, where did you say number one went on the board appointments? Do I even have that?
No, he just added that. It's under...
Thank you.
Under the Finney Community Center. We'll add that, your board appointment. We have the resignation, and then the new one back. All right? And four is under county attorney, and then a number eight under request for the county administrator.
Madam Chair, make a motion to amend the agenda as you've stated.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
David, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, the first thing we have is to turn our meeting over to our county administrator for the organizational meeting, first forward meeting of the year.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First thing on the agenda, the organizational meeting is selection of the chairman of Russell County Board of Supervisors.
I'd like to nominate Lu Wallace for that position.
I'll second that. I'd like to nominate David Eaton.
All right, any others?
Is there any others?
I don't have it. All have it, it's hard to pronounce.
So the first one, we have Lu Ann Wallace, is that correct? And the second one, we have David Eaton. Is there any other nominations? Since there's no other nomination, it's been, I need to move, a move to cease all nominations and then be closed. Move to cease all nominations. Since it's been moved to all nominations for the chairman, it has now been closed. Is there, if there's no other nominations to the nominations, then nominations are closed. We were received with the vote in reverse order, first with David Eaton and then Ms. Wallace, in reverse order, for the nomination of the Russell County Board of Supervisors, chairperson. David Eaton, raise your hands. Can I see that? Three, okay. Ms. Wallace? Ms. Wallace, congratulations as a Russell County Board of Supervisors Chairperson.
Thank you. So we'll continue on. Please, the public, excuse me, I'm suffering from a tiny little cold tonight, so I'm all masked up. Anyway, we'll move on to the organizational meeting with the election of the vice chair. I'll take a motion from the board for vice chair.
I'll nominate Oris Christian.
Okay, we have a nomination for Oris Christian. Do we have another one?
I'll nominate Carl Ray.
We have a nomination for Carl Ray. Any more? Okay, we'll take it in reverse order. Carl Ray for vice chair of the Russell County Board of Supervisors. All in favor? We have three. Okay, for Oris Christian for vice chair. Thank you, the motion carries. Oris Christian is now the vice chair of the Russell County Board of Supervisors. Moving on in the organizational meeting for clerk of the board and deputy clerk.
Does that mean Vicki? Make a motion to nominate, or to elect Alonzo Lester as clerk and Vicki Porter as deputy clerk. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a nomination for Mr. Lester as clerk and Ms. Porter as deputy clerk. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Adoption of the county bylaws, those are in your packet.
I'll make a motion to adopt the latest version of Robert's Rules of Order.
Thank you, we have a motion for the Robert's Rules of Order adoption.
I'll second it.
We have a second. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And we also, going on to number five in the organizational meeting, is adoption of county bylaws.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Eaton and Mr. Ray. All in favor? Any discussion? I'm sorry. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Number six in the organizational meeting, 2022 Board of Supervisors Regular Scheduled Meetings, that is in your packet.
I'll make a motion to adopt the meeting dates as listed. Six PM, it's listed on page one of the agenda or the board packet.
We have a motion from Mr. Breeding to adopt the scheduling as presented in your packet.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Lovelace. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next, moving on to acknowledgements. We have an acknowledgement in our packet by Dr. Rexrode, Russell County Lifetime Achievement Award. Mr. Lester, do you need to discuss that?
No, ma'am. Can we approve the budget schedule also?
Where is that?
Number seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, number seven?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, the FY '22, '23, budget meeting schedule, yes.
Motion to approve that schedule.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Eaton. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? We don't need to say anything more about that, right? Because the schedule is in there for the budget connection.
It is, ma'am, yes, it is.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to the acknowledgement for Dr. Norman Rexrode. Lu, I'm going to pass this down to you, dear. This is not handy to mash this little microphone at the same time. The presentation for Dr. Norman Rexrode, he is a West Virginia University Medical School graduate of 1978, East Tennessee State University, a residence and internship hospital in 1980, board certified in emergency medication. He became a member of the Russell County Medical Staff in September the 10th of 1983, served in various positions at Russell County, including most recently, the Secretary-Treasurer of the Medical Executive Committee, served as chief of the emergency medicine as well as various leadership positions within the hospital. In 2010, Mountain State's Health Alliance Servants Heart Recipient. In 2021, the Governor's EMS Award for Physician and Outstanding Contribution to EMS awarded the Frank M. Yizer Trophy. And at this time, we'll present to Dr. Rexrode a Lifetime Achievement Award, outstanding in recognition of outstanding emergency medical service and commitment to leadership and involvement for the citizens of Russell County.
Please come over, Dr. Rexrode.
Yes, we need a photo wall. And I've already read this, that's okay, that's okay.
Tell us when to be... You have a person.
Can you see everyone? I want to make sure everyone's in there.
Everybody left in.
You're right, you see us all.
Thank you.
Heather would have done better job than that.
They won't.
Heather would have done.
Shut up. Is the microphone on? Did you, a wire to a wire, a tire to a wire, tonight? We finally got you out of your scrubs. I've seen you out of scrubs in twenty years. Thank you, sir. Thank you so much, Senator. We appreciate you. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're moving on to presentations. We do ask that you have a limit of about five minutes. And the first one is the Russell County PSA.
In lieu of the presentation by the PSA, we met with them in a closed session to discuss some legal issues. So, at the request of the Russell County PSA, I will make a motion to temporarily suspend Mr. Carter McGlaughlin as a board member of the Russell County PSA, as there are currently criminal charges against Mr. McGlaughlin for the alleged use of public property. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to temporarily suspend Mr. McGlaughlin from the Russell County PSA. Any further discussion on the matter? I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes, I currently work part-time with the PSA and I'll be abstaining.
Thank you so much.
I'll still abstain.
We have two abstentions? All right, moving on, presentations, litter ordinance, Mr. Hancock.
He's not here.
Okay. Moving on to new business, approval of the minutes, and consider approval of the minutes of the following meeting of the Russell County Board of Supervisors, that's in your packet under D1, unapproved minutes of December 6, 2021.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Eaton. Second by Mr. Ray. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Moving on to new business, number two, approval of expenditures, consider approval of expenditures presented for payment.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
You just missed it.
I included that in the other one, so we took that in. I guess that's okay, right?
Motion to approve payment of bills.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Madam Chair, see Mr. Hancock.
Yes, I was unavoidably detained.
Okay. At the chair's pleasure, let me move through new business and we'll go back to presentations, if you may. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay, thank you. All right, number three, new business, approval of 2022 authorized payments.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Mr. Breeding?
Second.
Mr. Eaton, thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Number four, committee appointments for board consideration. And I think we have, at this time, the budget committee, is this there? I'm not on that page.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the chair's pleasure for board appointment for budget is Rebecca Dye, I'm asking. Ms. Dye?
Yes.
And Mr. Christian, will you agree to serve on the budget committee for this year? Thank you so much. Next one, we move on to the board appointments for Finney Community Center. Mr. Ray, is that yours?
Yes, Chair. Can I do both of these at the same time?
I think you can do this as a block.
You can. I'd like to put Mr. David Compton and Mr. Edward Tiller back on there.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Compton and Mr. Tiller for the Finney Community Center.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Lovelace. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Also, we come to number five in new business, which was added previously, for, this is a planning commission appointment. This is for District Two, so if I may, be indulged just a minute. Mr. Collins, that we previously approved for that appointment, is unable to serve in that position. And so District Two will now be looking for another position. I have an application from Philip Addison. I'm asking the board to give me a nomination for that particular seat.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of the other one and then appoint Philip Addison. Is it Addison?
Addison.
Addison, ma'am.
Yes, and so we need to do that in two separate motions, I'm assuming.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of...
Charlie Collins.
Second.
Thank you so much. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and now we'll move on to adding Mr. Addison to the PSA from District Two.
I'll make a motion to add Philip Addison to the planning commission.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, two seconds, and all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you so much. Now, we're going to go back to presentations, since Mr. Hancock has arrived. Mr. Hancock, we're glad to have you, you have five minutes.
Generally, when people say they're glad to have me, I figure they're just being polite.
We're being polite, so thank you.
Actually, I don't have much of a presentation. Of course, then I had notebooks, I guess, last month. Everybody get a notebook, including you, Oris? You didn't hear me, did you?
I didn't hear you, like, except I saw on the... What are you asking me to do?
Oh, I was just asking if you got your notebook from last meeting. Okay, good, all right. Actually, I have just, I think, one question. That is, now, you folks all know who I am, because I've been here before, and I know you, it took me a while to figure out who you were with that mask on. That's why you all are throwing thanks anyway, yeah. How many, and I'd like to see a show of hands, how many of you folks have been up to see the property that I'm talking about and have been around the back? Not just been up there and seen it from the front, because the front's not where the offensive materials are, or the back. Now, I know, Alonzo, you went up there, I think, with Bill Watson, but I don't know if you and Bill went around the back. I know you said the guy wasn't very pleasant, which is my experience with him as well. But, be that as it may, how many of you guys have been up there and been around the back? Just raise your hand.
I didn't go around the back.
I didn't go around the back.
Well, it's...
But you see the back.
Yeah, well, yeah. Although, it's really hard to even see from back there, although there's a way. I have to laugh, I, a gentleman called the police on me, tried to have me arrested for invasion of privacy, trespassing. And the officers came up, but, anyway. I have represented the subdivisions for years, and so I know all the lot lines off. And by the way, if that generates a question as to why I'm here when I represent the subdivisions, back in the seventies, probably, when this subdivision was done, and I didn't do it, actually, Dennis Jones did it at that time. Probably the latest, greatest thing in this area of the country was what you call a subdivision with regular cross covenants, in other words. When you buy a lot in that subdivision, you're subject to the same restrictions as everyone else. And that's what restrictions apply to this gentleman's property. Now, he has, on occasion, said crude things to me about his right to do whatever the heck he wanted with that property, and that's a euphemism. But, I've always said, I just need a yes or a no. I think we can enforce it, but I believe I told, I've told some people that that pits neighbor against neighbor, and I don't, I don't necessarily want to do that. I used to do divorce work when I was young, and I had lots of people wanting to shoot me. Totally they would, but I've gotten kind of used to that, but some of the old folks that live up to my street don't, they really don't want to be involved with that in name, okay? So, I always took the position on this, matter of fact, it shows how foolish I was. One of my neighbors got upset about it, and I forget who said something to me, or several of them said something to me, so I said, "Well, we have an ability to go and join the business activities there," or in my estimation we do. But that's on us. We pay for that, because this is not a planned unit development, it's not a community, and we don't pay dues every month, and pay for attorney's fees, swimming pools, all that. But, the good news is, I'll do it for free for the attorney, you know, the attorney work won't cost anything, but it would really be, and I'm not charging for this, not having charged a penny at all, not planning on charging a penny, but I said that the best way, and matter of fact, that was right about the time I noticed you guys were enacting the new ordinance in 2020. So, I said, "Well, heck, they're enacting a new ordinance." So, I said that the county really ought to do it, because I've got the old ordinance here, of course, then I've got the new ordinance, but I guess that's when I talked to Alonzo first. But anyway, it's been a trip. So, but never had, but fool I was to say it ought to be simple to get the Board of Supervisors to act, and I have been told everything in the world. But I said I'd be brief. Anytime you guys want to ask me about the whole story, that's fine, because it is a comedy of errors, and I don't think anybody really understands where I'm coming from. I've written to the county, I've written to a lot of people, but anyway. So, I'm just here to see what you guys wanted to, and that's what I'm here for.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock, I think your time is, and we appreciate you coming. I would defer this to Mr. Lester and the county attorney.
Sure.
The board has a right to say what they want to, and they can make comment at this time, but I, as chair, I would send that over to Mr. Lester and our county attorney.
All right.
Mr. Madam Chair, should I, there's been actions on this property, enforcement actions?
Yes.
Could you go over all that, what's been done?
I can. So, give me a little bit of time. Mr. Hancock, this is the property you're referring to, right here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Matter of fact, that was maybe one of my photographs.
No, those are mine. And I'll go through how long we've been working on this. So, the, in the board packet that I gave them, of course, this is litter ordinance, this is, this is the property that you're referring to here, that's outlined here, that's on Kennedy, on the corner of Star and Strive and Kennedy Drive, this is the location.
Yeah, although that looks like a satellite photo that I tendered, because it's just not messy like the property.
Right, that's our GIS system, our GIS system. So, we were notified back in 2019, 2020. Since then, we've had three deputies.
By the way, so these folks will understand the GIS, the Geographical Information System, am I correct?
Thank you, Mr. Hancock, yes, it is. So, we gave a two-week notice to, let me go through all those. We gave a two-week notice to Mr. Hicks to clean up, and it was given to Mr. Hicks by Cuba Porter Jr. back here, at that sitting back here. Now, that was in March of 2020. Now, during that time, we have been going through and reviewing the property on a continuous basis. As, as you can see, each one of these is date and timestamp on the time that we have inspected each and every time. When you called the first time, this is, as everyone can see, this is 2021, this is February the 25th of 2021. This is February the 25th of 2021.
May I interrupt you for a second, just so we can get on with the interview?
Yes.
You can't, in order to keep from going to jail, you can scroll out some. I, this gentleman threatened me with invasion of privacy and trespassing. Well, I didn't understand the trespassing part, because I was acting over here at the ditch line. And the ditch line's there, the streets over there, the paved streets, are 50 feet wide on paper, but they're significantly, but they're significantly narrower, especially Star and Strive, which has never been taken in this state system. So I was standing out here, and I was taking photographs of him intentionally. I knew he was there. Matter of fact, I accidentally activated my video of him and got him threatening me, saying crude things that hurt my feelings. Now, what I want you to know, and I'm glad you've got a good camera, because if you look at all this stuff, see that, it's all still there. It's on the snow right now, okay? I just want you to know, unless you go and you look, and by the way, here's lot line. Also, over here, there's a fence.
Yes.
And his lot line doesn't really start right about that tree.
No.
So you could actually go up there and walk along that fence there without, and take plus a photograph, without getting on his property.
Go ahead and let me proceed from February to now. Thank you. So this is when you made the call to the county. This is when we went out and did our inspection of it. During that time, this is what the property looked like that we gave him notice on, to clean up. To remember, this-
Actually, I don't believe it. Are you sure that that's-
That's, yeah, these are date stamped and timestamp. That is February the 25th of 2021. Those are the time-
That's 2021.
Yes.
I first called up there, I first talked with Deputy Sheriff in, up here in the sheriff's office, in 2020, February 2020. I've been on this since February 2020. And I know about when he came up there, and I know about what they told him.
Please let me-
Sure.
So we've had three deputies out there. Mr. Watson, Mr. Cuba Porter, and Mr. Hydrant. So we've had three deputies that reviewed this. So again, this is when we gave the notice to begin with it. And as I go through each one of these, as we can see-
Now, wait a minute. You know what irritates me about this? And I'm going to say my piece, and you can have me thrown out if you want. But how come it's been two years since I complained, and the first time I see you guys have done anything other than hearing from Cuba Porter himself that he went up there and told them that they, the only thing that they enforced was trash? Now, why is that? What we need is a court hearing, and I'd be glad to have one. Why don't you guys just cut to the chase and tell me what you want to do? Do you think it applies or not?
Mr. Hancock.
Can we continue?
Mr. Hancock.
Will we give the notice to the residents?
Well, why don't I, the complaint party, get a copy of that? Now, I have had discussion-
Now, wait a minute, Mr. Hancock.
No.
Mr. Hancock, I'm asking you, I'll have you removed now. We're going to discuss this in another place, so I'm not cutting you off. Yes, sir.
Oh, good.
We're going to discuss this in another place.
Oh, good.
I think that you need to take this up with the county administrator and work on this, as you possibly can.
That's okay. I think, I think there's a lot of communication that needs to go on, because I really think, I've been thinking all along that there needs to be more communication here. And I don't think, by listening to Mr. Lester tonight, that we're going to get the whole story. As a matter of fact, even though I gave everybody notebook, that's not even the whole story.
Mr. Hancock, finished. We appreciate you, really, and we're going to try to work on this. So let's just leave it there for the time being, and then we're going to move on.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Those pictures were-
Mr. Hancock?
Yeah.
You're finished. Okay, the next thing we're going on is to citizens' comment period. Now, if you have signed up, you're welcome to come and speak your case tonight for three minutes. Do we have anyone that's signed up to speak? Okay, no citizens' comment period right now. Constitutional officers and reports, do we have any of those that were sent in? No. County attorney reports and requests. Patton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first thing under my reports is the noise ordinance that I was directed to format for Russell County. The ordinance that you all have, the proposed ordinance that you all have in front of you, I've adapted from the Albemarle County noise ordinance. It was far more specific than the original one we considered. The only issue that I came across when I was revising it to take out any references to zoning or other code sections that Albemarle County had, was on, let's see, I think I'm on page five. Yes, it's at the bottom of page five, and that section says, "General sound levels prohibited." And in that, and I took out some of the language that they had in that did not make any sense for us, but they put that it's unlawful for any person to produce sound that causes at least 15 dBA increase in the sound level, above the ambient sound level. And then it said, "As determined pursuant to County Code 18 dash or dot 18." And that's what I have provided you, is this section here talked about procedure for measuring sound, but as you can see, this is a pretty voluminous document in and of itself. And so before we, if the board wanted to move forward with advertising this for adoption, I just wanted to get feedback from the board, how specific, or how do you want to word that section as "general sound levels prohibited"? Because, again, the section that details it is in another part of Albemarle's code, and it's very, very voluminous. And so my first instinct was that you would not want to have all of that language, but I just needed a little bit more guidance on how you wanted that to be determined.
Okay?
Madam Chair, could we, could we have until the next meeting to review this ordinance?
I would definitely entertain that as a motion.
Katie, could, you know, I mean, we really haven't seen it in a finished form. I'd like an opportunity to look at it and make comments on it, and then be in a position next court may direct me into moving forward, whatever. Would that be okay?
Sure, no problem, and I can make any changes if you want to send them to me between now and then, and I'll look at, I'll look at some more at this language that they have for how it's, because I mean, I think that's a pretty important thing, is how the violation is determined.
Absolutely, that's the key to the whole thing, is being able to, some way to determine if, when, if and when you enforce it.
Yes, I think there's some provisions in the ordinance that help with that, but that one section was a little bit problematic. I couldn't just revise it. I had, I needed to know exactly what we wanted to do and what's feasible, because one of the things that lists are devices and how they're calibrated. And so we want to, we might want to make sure that we can get access to those.
Is this the attachment that you gave us, okay?
I just want to ask a question, Katie, if you don't care. When it comes to AF on firearms, I said on all these, on the exemptions, but it doesn't say anything about hunters or hunting. It doesn't list, it says shooting range, shooting preserve, or target trap, or skeet range. Exemptions are gun club, but what about the normal hunter out here that hunts?
Well, we can definitely add that. That might not have been something that they decided to include in Albemarle County, but that's something we can always add. And I think that may have been covered in the, in the proposed noise ordinance that Lonzo first presented to you, so I might can pull that language. And just if you see other concerns, again, this is more, I mean, there are some rural areas to Albemarle County, but we think of it as more of an urban area, and they may not have the same concerns that we do.
Okay, so I'm hearing a consensus from this board that we're going to move forward with this, with, we're going to doctor it at so soon. Okay. Thank you, Katie. Now, moving on to the Russell County Employee Insurance Retirement Program?
Yes, the board asked me to look at this. I had initially been asked to look at this regarding what the school, the Russell County schools do with, this is a retirement incentive. And the retirement incentive that they've offered for years, I knew was legally sound. That's something they've been doing for a while. The issue that first came was a concern of mine was whether or not, because we have all these different agencies and agency heads, whether there was some kind of way to keep up with the sick time, to report back, because the retirement incentive allows Russell County employees who have worked at least 15 years to use sick days up to a certain amount to buy basically health insurance, to help, to help cover the cost of the health insurance. And so at first, I asked Lonzo if maybe we should just do the flat fee. But I think it's probably, he explained it was probably more economical because we were going to be paying out that time anyways. And that time, that sick time that they would be using would be, is reportable and is tracked every year. So that was my only concern in you all implementing this program, is that you would not have a uniform way of enforcing it the way that the schools do. But after I spoke with Lonzo, and he said that, you know, he would be paying that time out no matter what, because that's accounted for, and that has to be paid out in any sick, sick time, that that could be used as an incentive for anybody who's worked over 15 years. So I am fine with the proposed policy for retirement. I did suggest to Lonzo that we might pass a separate resolution, not this, to allow anyone within this 90-day period that retires to avail themselves, if they meet all the eligibility requirements, to avail themselves of this policy, because you do have to give 90 days notice. And so if you have somebody, if the board does decide to adopt the policy tonight, and somebody retires between now and 90 days, technically, they would not have time. So I would just waive it for the initial 90 days, if you want to pass the policy.
Well, Cynthia, I think we need to take into consideration that this is, the insurance is with the school board, and Ms. Tammy, I was going to say Caldwell, but Gilbert, no. She's the one that does all this. She pulls all this together, gets everybody's sick days, keeps their files, signs all their documents. And, I mean, I just think we need to include her to explain it to all of us, what it is, because it is percentages. It's 60%, 66%, 70%. And Tammy has not been involved in this, and she's who basically does it for everybody. So, I mean, that's just a thought.
I also think that we should table, because we really need to get more information. How many people is approaching this retirement time? How many years they got in? Right now, I think if 15 years, 15 years for, 50 years for. Is that?
Yes.
And I'm kind of like Rebecca, we, I feel like make a wise decision. Now, this is a financial decision that's going to cost money to taxpayers, because all taxpayers are going to put their money away and take it out to pay these people. And we need to really know the ins and outs, and how many people, and when they're subject to retire, and all, before we make the decision. I'm for helping the people. These people have been there 20 years, 25, 30 years. I wouldn't want to try and knock them out or anything. It's just that before we take this raw step, we need more information in order to take this step.
Katie, is this the same as the school board?
Yes, that's my understanding. Lonzo called it from, we did eliminate one of the options.
Tammy didn't take care of all the county employees, did she? Just for a sick week or such?
No. See, that's what I'm saying.
Well, Vicky did say-
She explained it, and Vicky, when we have any medical things, Vicky kind of tells Tammy, and she'll work on it, and she does.
To me, this is just saying that you're trading your accumulated sick days for payment. It's a way that we can pay out, we're going to have to pay that. Somebody has 175 days, we're going to have to pay it, either write a big check or let them take it out as payments, you know, we can sort of spread it out. Isn't that right, Lonzo? We spread out the payments in insurance payments.
Yes. The program is set up to start for county employees to convert their retirement, the way it's written right here for the school board, and I'm going to elaborate on that. For 15 years, they can take up to 175 hours and pay it towards what we call a health insurance credit.
Days, 175 days, not hours.
Thank you, ma'am. 175 hours, days, sorry, days, towards a healthcare credit, which will pay for their insurance up to retirement. But there's also the other side of the coin. Now, that I would have to liquidate. When an employee retires, I have to liquidate whatever time they accumulate. That's an easy one. But one of the things that the also the board has to consider, because you've got to know it, it becomes like a pension liability. It is a liability long term, because right now, the way that it is written, it's written for a single policy. It does not cover the employee's spouse. It does not cover the employee's siblings. It is a single policy for a retiree. Now, based off our health insurance, what it costs for one single employee, as he sits on the board, Tim does too, you will incur 60% of that liability from the county. So those 15 that you have that are eligible right now, you would have, depending upon their years of tenure, you would incur that liability up to a maximum of seven years. So that would be an impact to the county that y'all need, you know, need to consider.
Seven years until they're eligible for Medicare?
Or Medicare, yes, one or the other.
Whichever.
It's just seven.
That is correct. Well, one of the things I've always said is we need to treat people fairly and equally, because this should have been took care of a long time ago, based on, you know, some getting certain benefits. Because if you've got employees that's been here 15, 20 years, this is all they've got to look forward to at the end of their tenure, is being able to get these kind of benefits, and I don't want to hold them out.
No, I don't either.
And spending 20 years of employment with Russell County, and then just say, "Well, you know, it's a great investment. You're going to get a good return on your investment when you take care of the people."
Well, I've had several people ask me, you know, they've tried to retire, and they can't, you know, it's such a financial impact on their insurance. If you've got over 30 years, you get 85% of your insurance paid by the board, you know, and trade for those days. So I think that's something we need to do just immediately.
And at the end of the seven years, say like you're 40 years old and 50 years in, then that, in seven years, your insurance stops. See, it's a seven-year-
Yeah, seven years are until you are eligible for Medicare.
Medicare.
So if you're, if you're 62 and you retire, then you, then you've got it. I mean, you'll, you'll get your-
That's correct.
And in fact, you might even have a balance on your sick days.
But if you're 50, if you're 55, and you're going to retire and get Medicare at 62, you're-
65.
65.
You can only get Medicare at 65.
Yeah.
But you can, you can take Social Security at 62.
Yes, Social Security.
Social Security, but you can't take Medicare. Yes, that is correct.
I might take it at 62. Why not? So you have, and I want to get the Medicare, you have to be 65. So they can retire at 58?
They can retire at 50 per this policy, if they got 15 years to serve. Madam Chair, may I make a suggestion?
Yes, thank you.
And now, you're going to, since Mr. Breeden sits on healthcare, can you point a committee with the county administrator, two board members, the Vicky Porter, the HR, and Tammy Gilbert? Tammy's to get, look at this, to present to the next-
I don't want to drag this out any further than next board meeting.
That way, that way, the liability-
Because there are people been waiting on this for five or six months, and they've been told what is going to happen, so they put off their retirement for that long.
Yes, and we-
And I like your idea, Katie, about making it retroactive.
We did discuss that.
I think we need to include that in there.
We did discuss that. So that's my, if the board, we don't want to lose it for the employees. You know, everybody's-
So you want the insurance committee, Tim, and me, and you and Vicky?
Whoever the chair wants to appoint.
Please. Are you guys, you guys okay with that?
You're okay. That way, we can present it to the next board with the liability component. Because the up portion, the first portion of it, the liquidation of what they- Because the up portion, the first portion of it, the liquidation of what they've accrued up to the 175 days is easy. That's guaranteed. By law, we have to pay that.
We get it no more.
That's it. Either you pay it out on some, or you want to accrue it into credit. This way, we can look at the number of employees that we've got coming up for retirement age, and what we'll be accruing on the books, because this thing will have to be reported as an accrual for insurance. So I think that you give the full picture to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Loester. I appreciate that.
I'd like to have full picture for I can vote in favor of it. I'd like to know more, have more information. When this committee goes and mutual Tammy comes back, I'd like to have time to just lay it down and say, review that. I, you all know, I don't like something you lay down here on me. I have time to read and research and everything, and then turn on both the questions. I like to, I like to study things and research.
We'll have a full report for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. You need to have your pressure microphone for the folks out in TV land, I guess. Number three on the county attorney reports is the Cumberland Industries Facility Authority Executive Director contract.
Yes, Madam Chair, and I've received the exec, excuse me, the executed copy back from Chase Collins, the Tazewell County Attorney today, and I'll email the board a copy of that. But I'll just sort of give you a gist. I mean, each county of the four counties, Dickinson, Tazewell, Russell, McCann, and all appropriated a sum of money to hire this executive director to work on behalf of this region for economic development. The board, the SIPA board did approve that, and the attorneys finalized the contract. And I think she, do you know when she signed it, Lonzo? Or has she signed, or has she just received?
She has received it, and she has accepted it.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions? I mean, it's just, she will be an independent contractor of the SIPA authority, and so her contract state is for one year and is subject to appropriation from all the boards. So I mean, you know, this is kind of, it's kind of an experiment. Hopefully, it'll work out. Hopefully, she can bring industrial development to this region. But if you all, if any, well, if any board is not satisfied, then they don't have to reappropriate the money.
Do you need the action on this, just for information? Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, moving on to number four, the Southwest Regional Jail.
Yes, Lonzo provided me an agreement and a resolution, which is, you know, basically to adopt the City of Bristol into the Regional Jail Authority. It was an agreement where BRA and the jail authority voted to accept them in. It's my understanding from talking to Lonzo that the authority did vote to accept them in. The resolution, that's before the board tonight to approve. The gist of it is, is basically it's asking you to approve to accept Bristol in, and basically stating that none of your obligations relating to the prior 2013, 2020 bonds will be changed. Obviously, there will be, the one thing, the agreement that was not attached was the Exhibit A, which will talk about Bristol, what they have to contribute and those things. But basically, I mean, I don't know how it will change financially. I don't know if Lonzo has any more information for that. But if the board is willing to move forward with this, it's my understanding it's the request of the Regional Jail Authority Board for Russell County to approve this tonight.
Madam Chair, can I elaborate? Or Tim?
One.
From the county's perspective, of course, everyone knows the City of Bristol has had issues with their jail, and Tim can elaborate on that more, because he sits on the authority, and so does Mr. Christian. From the county's perspective, it is approximately a $70,000 to $80,000 savings, because they're helping pay for the cost. They're going to pay help for the operational cost, and they're going to help with the debt cost. So from the impact, now, Mr. Loveless and Mr. Christian sit on it, so they can tell more about the program itself. From the county's perspective, it's an $70,000 to $80,000 savings.
Let me ask you, when I read the thing, it implied that they could have some sort of financial savings for renovation of jail, or are they doing some capital work in Bristol?
Yes, sir.
And there's an advantage being part of the regional jail authority? They get better rates?
Better rates.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And everyone else will too, because part of the agreement is that they have to pay a premium per day.
Yes.
For 10 years. Plus, they have to do, they have to pay for a minimum number of inmates, whether they have them or not.
They got to get piled up.
They got to get piled up.
Guaranteed.
Good deal.
Minimum contribution.
Okay. So the next is on the agenda for the county administrator reports and requests.
I'm sorry, ma'am, is the board.
We need to, we need to have a motion to approve that. Okay, I apologize. Yes, I'll entertain a motion to accept Bristol, Virginia into the regional jail.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Mr. Loveless, make a motion. A second. Mr. Christian, any discussion? We've already had that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, motion carries. Now, moving on to the county administrator reports and requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the county administrator reports and requests, the first one on the list is the 2022 VACO Virginia Rule, Center and Rule Caucus Reception. This is for bureau's information only. This will take place February the 2nd and the 3rd. This is for the Rule Caucus. This will be in Richmond. Some of the board members that will be attending, of course. This is the, also the local government day, you know, with VACO and VML, that will be discussing, you know, things that the counties and legislators will be addressing during this legislative period. It will be, as the board members attend, it'll be very advantageous, you know, to attend these meetings, because of the rapid changes that's going to happen legislatively, economic development, and especially with the federal participation on various funds. So right now, it's, there's anticipated great attendance on this from all the counties, even though there is a COVID, you know, issue, but there will be a great attendance. Second thing on the county administrator requests and reports is, of course, your state and local economic interest and financial disclosure statements. It's that time of year again. So it's included in your packet. Please fill those out and return them to us by no later than the end of the month, because we have to have them submitted.
End of March.
End of January.
January.
Yeah, end of the month. Thank you. Third thing is the Project Jona, which is interjurisdiction agreement that we have with Tazewell County. I have spoke with Tazewell County. This jurisdiction agreement is a report-only. Currently, right now, we have Project Jona that is partial in Tazewell County and half in Russell County. So we're working and serving on stormwater management and soil erosion services. So each county right now is performing its own environmental services for stormwater management, it's being handled by DEQ. And each county is handling their ENS services on each side. Tazewell County is doing theirs, and we're handling theirs. We're also into the stage of blasting. We're also working with VDOT on the route to come out on 19. We're having to also have public notices along with Russell County and Tazewell County for lane closures that will close both northbound and southbound 19. So we're coordinating that with VDOT, which I don't see VDOT in here today. But we will be coordinating those blastings with that. What we have decided to do is until the jurisdiction agreement will come in place, when we start collecting the building fees. That has been mentioned and has sent to us by the engineers. They're anticipating the set of plans and the building permits in March. That way, that we can charge our fees to this. Right now, we're occurring these fees, we're keeping our own time, we're keeping our own time sheets, because the building inspector's going out there, we're going out there doing their inspections, and Tazewell County is doing the same. So once we get these in place, I'll be coming back to the board to, for the jurisdiction agreement. So we would be able to charge back to the county this project and not incur $1 of county funds in this whatsoever. This is a private development, they will pay for these services. So next, on the county administrator request.
Do you need the action on this?
No, it's just reported. Yes, until it comes back for the building permit fees and activation.
I have a question, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Our permit fees are up to date, so we will be getting top dollar off.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Next, on the county administrator report, the request is a request by the county administrator to all board members for a Russell County full-time litter officer. Let me explain. We have, as y'all have seen previously in the meeting, we have utilized the sheriff's department, but of course, the sheriff's department have other duties. It's hard for them to come off of their routes and their movements to take on litter control. We also have looked at internal alignment. That didn't work either. So also, we have looked at hiring a part-time litter control fellows. I have searched, I have worked with the sheriff's department. But it's come to the point, along with what, grants that we receive, we receive grants for litter pickup, also the fines that we can incur. I think that we are at the point, as long as other counties, because Mr. Eaton had asked us to check with the other counties. And currently, McCannan County and Dixon County, for the way Spanish Authority have their own litter officer, they already have one. So I'm asking the board for permission for a full-time litter control officer that will be under the sheriff's department. That's the way it will be, same as the way ZANL Control. But the operations will remain, same as ZANL Control, will be under the county. That way, it will be an office that will be working with the building inspector, and they'll have a set schedule and are in review. That way, we are working, they have police powers, but they will be working with the county to solve these litter issues. So we, I have been working with the sheriff, you know, we have talked with him. And one of the things that has been suggested is, they are looking at Southwest Virginia Community College, they're looking at their judicial school, and the ones that's coming out of the academy, and to look at one that has a little bit maybe of environmental background and sheriff powers. So this one will be active. I know in the past that we had a sheriff as a litter, I mean, had a litter control officer, it wasn't the sheriff's, but before, we never had, and now a control under the sheriff's. So this will give a structure between the sheriff's department and the county operations and county reporting back to the BOS. I think this will be a great position, and it'll pay for itself. At least give me one year to see what we can do. Thank you. Now, that one, I need a motion.
I will entertain a motion for a Russell County litter officer.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion from Ms. Dye. I need a second.
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Breeding. Any further discussion?
He will be, he has to follow, he has to go through, he's coming out of the academy.
Yes, sir.
So he'll be, he'll carry firearm. I'm convincing anybody carries firearm has to come through the sheriff's department.
Yes, yes, they will. Well, I will tell you this, too. There's a really great piece of legislation, I think Senator Hackworth is getting through. We've met with him on these retirees that retire, like from a police position, they don't have to go back through the academy. If that gets passed, there's going to be an opportunity that those guys can be utilized and gals can be utilized in many various types of opportunities. You know, retirees that don't have to, they retire and they're not forced to go back through the academy, to go through the regiment. But they can still serve in a great, a great capacity in different areas. So we need to really support and send out emails or whatever to support this piece of legislation that he's filed. So.
That was if they had done it within, if they had retired within a certain period of time, not way back then, but well, that's recent.
Yeah.
That's what I would understand that way.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? We have a motion on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county administrator request is, of course, the Department of Criminal Justice Violence Against Women grant for $62,009. I need a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion approved.
Again, next on the county administrator request is the Department of Criminal Justice. This is the 2021 mitigating COVID-19 pandemic risk that is $47,189 that was awarded to the Russell County Sheriff's Department, in addition to the other terrorist funds. Need a motion for approval and acceptance.
I'll make that motion. We have a motion from Ms. Dye, and I have her second.
Second.
A second from Mr. Ray. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county administrator request is the Russell County Sheriff's Vehicle Surplus. This is a request by the sheriff's department to declare these vehicles as surplus, a 2008 Ford E-50 van, a 2000 International Horden, a 1999 Freightliner, a 1995 Soft Top Humvee, Bill's getting rid of the Humvee, 2011 Jordan Thomas Charger. And the reason that we are doing this is, the authorization of the request, the authorization is for a quest to liquidate them for a government auction to proceed with Russell County or supervisors to purchase a 2000 Freightliner, which will be utilized as a crime scene vehicle. We're getting, they're consolidating these five vehicles into one. And also, let me elaborate, back on the litter officer. Litter officer will be supplied a car by the sheriff's department. It will be, it will have Russell County litter officer on this, on this. This is getting, yes, this is part of the agreements. So I need approval to surplus these five vehicles to proceed with the Russell County crime scene vehicle. So move.
We have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Ray. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number eight, veto resolution.
Yes, ma'am. There's a veto resolution that was asked by VDOT to be put on for the Route 743, the 0.20 miles of discontinuance on Route 743. This is part of VDOT's request, this is an annual inventory that they do. They asked for discontinuance on this portion, but they have not done maintenance on it, and I think for construction or anything for 38 years. I think that's what it says. So it says, "The Virginia Department of Transportation has notified Russell County Board Supervisors of its intent to discontinue a section of Route 743, 2.35 miles west of Route 650 to 2.15 miles west of Route 650, a distance of 0.20 miles." They're asking for a resolution for approval for discontinuance of this dead-end piece of road.
It's on roller coaster road.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I need a motion.
Some move.
Mr. Breeding, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ray. Any discussion further? I'll call for the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, that concludes the county administrator's reports and requests.
Thank you. So we're down to board discussion and reminders. Have I left off anything tonight?
No, ma'am.
All right. I'll go through District 1.
I'll just mention that David and I talked about the litter officer, and I did ask Carl and I, well, I brought it up whenever Carl and I had the last meeting. And what we did tonight is what all the surrounding counties are doing, and they highly recommend that, so. Good news to the board.
There were none unless you had it.
I knew we were going to do that. And that takes us a couple of years. Yeah, some of them have, some of them have too.
Really? Yes.
Mr. Ray?
No, Madam Chair.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes, ma'am, I just have a couple of things. Back when I first got elected, I've brought this issue up numerous times, I'm going to bring it up again tonight. I'd like for our budget committee to ask the school board for a plan to look at our teachers' wages and our low-end individuals, our school bus drivers, our cooks and those. One of my biggest concerns is that we need to be competitive in some form or fashion. I'm not saying this is an overnight fix. I'm not saying that. And I'm not saying that I'm looking for alternative education sources. What I'm saying is, we need to make sure that we can keep and hire and retain talent here in Russell County, and we're not going to be able
And we're not going to be able to do that unless we fix this issue. There's no way that based on a percentage raise that we'll ever catch up to these surrounding counties. We're going to continue to lose talent if we don't support our teachers and look at a way, some way, to be able to, be able to fix this issue. This has been, this, we didn't create the problem. This has been something that should have been directed and handled 20 years ago, but it wasn't. It should have been looked at deeply on how we could continue to maintain and keep up with this competitive edge as far as being able to compete with these other counties. I know we don't have as many in population. I understand that fully. And I am not for school consolidation and shutting down our schools. I know there's a way to do this without having to look at being threatened for cuts in, in other areas. We need to take this serious and look at it so we'll have people move here, live here and want to work here in Russell County. Second thing is, during the holidays, we need to do something about our trash situation. I mean, guys, listen, if we can't set out extra cans and leave these gates open so people can pull, throw their holiday trash away and then we're putting all that in the back of pickup trucks and they're driving down the road and it's going out all over the road before they get to the trash site, we, we're losing control of this. And it shouldn't be hard to fix. It just takes a little common sense to be able to look at this situation and be able to say, let's just leave the gates open, let's add extra containers so people can throw away their holiday trash. I mean, I, and then we're, we're sending all these people out to pick up the garbage off the side of the roads. It don't make no sense to them. Another thing I would like to thank our sheriff, Steve Dye, and our police force, state troopers, investigators, for their quick reaction to an incident that happened about a week ago. I guess everybody's heard about it with the shooting. And then the suspect was down around where my oldest son lived. They were all contained in their homes and the suspect, I guess, was apprehended or self-inflicted gunshot wound is what I'm hearing. But I want to thank them for their quick response, for what they did and the engagement they have with our citizens within that area. They protected people, they communicated well with them and they, and they kept people inside until this was took care of. And I am so grateful. I've got a brand new grandbaby that lives down there. And you know, you don't never think about it till it happens to you and in your back door. And my son's very capable of taking care of himself and his family. But there's a lot of people down there, a lot of, in that neighborhood, and elderly people, that this could have turned out a lot worse. And I just want to say I'm, I'm really grateful and that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Breeding?
I'm just going to follow up a little bit with what David talked about, teacher salaries. The reason these across-the-board mandates that we get in the state won't work is because when you do a 5%, say for example, in Washington County versus a 5% in Russell County, the gap between what we pay and what they pay just continues to get bigger and bigger and bigger. We have to come up with some, some way to get away from these across-the-board mandates and apply those funds that they require us to, to pump into the school system to be used in a more equitable way to try to get these salaries of some of the teachers up. I think the minimum wage increases are probably going to take care of a lot of the low-end people because, you know, and this minimum wage of $11 now, it's going to go to, what, 13?
15, 17?
Eventually, it'll go to 15.
It just went to 11.
Yeah, it just went to 11 January 1st, but I think maybe next year it goes to maybe, I don't know, maybe it's 13, 12, 15, 13.
Big Macs go to 25.
What was that?
Big Macs go to 25.
Yeah.
When they get it up there, Big Macs will be 25.
Okay.
Is that true?
No, no comments on that. Yeah. And, and we still need to make decision on Wallace property that's tied into jail, the parking lot. Still get calls from Mr. Wallace and he wants some answer and we've got to make some decision on what you're going to do with it, you know? That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Dye. No, thank you. Mr. Christian?
I want to reply to what David and Steve talked about this difference in teachers' pay in this county and others. I'm for that, but first of all, we've got to have a source of revenue, money coming in. Y'all know anyway, we've lost coal severs tax, we've lost people, the population down. Bringing jobs in, but getting them jobs in until then, we can't take that step, you said, not over life, which we can't. Until we get these jobs in, get people coming in and get some source of revenue to have that money there to pay them, we can't do it. We look at these different things and different phases of it and it's good to plan, but we can plan, but we can't take that bold step until we see that we got a source of revenue that we take care of with.
Mr. Christian, the only thing I've asked for since the beginning is a plan, is a plan. I've just asked for them to come together and let's just look at it. It might be a five-year plan, a 10-year, I don't know. But I just, I've asked for a plan of action to show how do we get from point A to point B. That's all I've asked for.
Who are you asking? Budget Committee or?
Budget Committee to meet with the school system to see how we can generate a plan to be able to fix it. That's all I've asked for, is a plan. Just, I mean, we got a lot of smart people.
So you're wanting the budget committee to make a plan for the school board?
Oh, I just like for our budget committee to be able to communicate with the school, school board system.
The school board needs to come back to us with their plan, what they're going to do.
We've asked for that numerous times and haven't received any.
From them.
From them.
We have to have from them to us.
Well, I think it'd be appropriate for the county budget committee to work with the school.
Yeah.
To, to come up with some sort of, county needs to have input, but specifically the cause what you talked about, we, but we don't know how much money we're going to have to have. I mean, the state says, you know, Northland sent down a 5% increase this year and a 5% next year. Now, you know, we've got the option to send it back to them and just not do any raises at all if we can't come up with the money. Our problem is that, you know, that only takes care of part of the teachers, the SOQ, right? And there's, there's 10 other, you know, people within the county who, if we just did what the state wants us to do, wouldn't get a raise at all, you know? We took the position right from the get-go, that wouldn't right, you know? So, you know, we need, we just need to come up with some plan, you know? It's not going to be easy, but you need to work with and see what you, you know, do.
We discussed this with the new governor and, and I think the Secretary of Education, you know, to meet with them and to have this discussion to see how we can come up to speed down here in the Caulfield County. And, I mean, what it is, we're just competing against each other consistently for that person. But we're the third lowest in the whole state of Virginia in pay. I mean, that's bad.
Oh, it is, but if you had, like I said, you ain't got the revenue to do it.
Okay. Well, I'm not trying to cut you off, but we, our, our new budget committee will work toward that request and I will make sure that I ask you about that in a month or so. We'll see where we get. How's that? Fair enough? All right. And from District 2, I don't have anything except to say, thank you to the board tonight for the litter officer. I am so pleased to hear this. Steve, I was going to hold your feet to the fire, or that's what you said last time. We're going to get us one. Thank you so much. District 2 appreciates this. Thank you. And in closing, February 7th is the next board meeting and I.
Do we need, wait, do we need to reconvene because we'll all be in Richmond on the.
We need to adjourn to reconvene in Richmond.
Adjourn to reconvene, okay.
Do you have enough going? And it's gone.
Not a bad one.
No.
I always advise that you adjourn to reconvene if you're going, because you're obviously going to be together and discussing county business. So if you, if more than two of you are going, then I always recommend that.